Good evening. At this point, Athens City Council will be starting in about 15 minutes. But meanwhile, we'll be swearing in -- I won't be, but Law Director Patrick Lang will be swearing in Kent Butler and Christine Fall.
Hey. Good evening. And let me just say, before we get started, just my own words of congratulations to both of you. And just to say how much I've enjoyed working with you. And Kent, of course, throughout the entire -- your first term. And Chris, I didn't know you as well, and I really enjoyed getting to know you a little better during your campaign. And I can just really say that in both instances, I found you to be both very hardworking and conscientious of public service, and I really look forward to working with you over the next few years. So Kent, I guess we'll start off with you. Just raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Kent Butler, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America [and the Constitution of the State of Ohio] and that I will faithfully discharge [the duties of Athens City Council First Ward Representative [to which I have been elected [for the term ending December 31, 2011]. All right. Congratulations. Okay. And Chris? "I, Christine Fall, do solemnly swear [that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America [and the Constitution of the State of Ohio] and that I will faithfully discharge [the duties of Athens City Council Fourth Ward Representative [to which I have been elected [for the term ending December 31, 2011]. Yes. Okay. Yeah.
You really want a picture? Okay. Okay. We'll resume in 10 minutes.
All right. These folks come over here and sign their votes. Thank you.
Oh, what do I have to ask? We're going to resume with the regular session of Athens City Council, the first one for 2010. And with all -- with six council members present? Nope, seven. I thought somebody wasn't going to be here. Sorry. No, in a few moments, you'll know it's going to be a good thing happening here. First thing we have to do under our rules of council is to appoint a clerk. Let's see. I will appoint Debbie Walker. There's no question about that. We can all go, she better stay. Any discussion on the appointment as may? Yes, sir?
Good idea.
All right. All those in favor of the appointment of the Clerk of Council, Debbie Walker, the post? Debbie Walker is our clerk for -- this next thing we do is appoint a President Pro Tem and an Acting President Pro Tem. Traditionally, the President Pro Tem was the majority party, and the Acting President Pro Tem was the senior member of the minority party. And you know from the last election that it's still a majority, although we are very different. And so, Sheri?
I move to appoint Jim Sands as President Pro Tem and Nancy Bane as Acting Pro Tem.
Second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. We're continuing with the seniority business here. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Congratulations, Jim. You can run the meeting next week. Next, we have the designation of Patrick Lang as parliamentarian. Does he have a motion to?
Madam President, I move that we designate Patrick Lang as parliamentarian of council.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Patrick is our parliamentarian.
Sometimes it's a difficult job.
The same thing. Yes. One more thing to add to your resume, Pat. Next, we have a disposition of minutes from December 7, 14, and 21, who have a motion to accept or?
I move to accept the disposition of minutes.
As of the minute as presented. Any seconds?
As presented.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are disposed of and accepted. Number six is communications, and I have a number that we'll start with, and we'll move on to other people's additions. First thing we'd like to announce in public, on Wednesday, the 6th of January, Athens City Council will be meeting with the President for lunch on our dime.
President of the university.
What did I say? City Council?
You just said president.
The president. That's true. Okay. Thank you. He's already taken him. We will be meeting at the restaurant, and it's going to be.
It's colossal.
And so, that's a public meeting because we will all be present, although I don't know that we're going to be taking any votes. So there we are, and that's 12 o'clock on Wednesday, the 6th of January. The second announcement is a tour. It started out rather small, and it's mushroomed. But the tour will happen on the 9th, which is Saturday, starting at 9:00, where a bus will be parked in front of City Hall to take us on a tour of, first of all, the two fire stations, also other entities. Now, we have Homeland Security rules, and those may be modified. But right now, Sheri, do you want to talk about the tour and about what we're going to do if somebody shows up because it is a public meeting?
Yes. If it is a public meeting, and as members of council will be present, we have the sunshine law to consider. And so, we're asking that any members of the public who wish to participate in this tour, please call the Clerk of Council's office prior to Saturday, and let her know your name and address. We would appreciate that.
And the strategy will be to vet those. Now, this may change because we're going to ask Paula to make sure this is okay, but it's a public meeting, so I guess that we'll deal with any issues that come up at that point. But there may be a slight announcement in the paper if something changes drastically. Another communication from Liquor Control, and it is application for a new license for a B, a new B. And this is a -- for the Grand Ranchero Incorporated, 979 East State Street, Athens, Ohio. And it's due on the 25th, and I hope that if somebody has an issue, they could take a look at this. We'll ask the police officer, we'll ask Paula, the Service Safety Director, if there are any issues. Otherwise, at the next meeting or the meeting after that, we'll ask for. But maybe it won't be, and we should just see. And then, I think I've done everything on my list. Is that right, Debbie? Okay. So now, I'm ready to turn it over to Chris Fall, who's communicating madling with her constituents.
Right. Thank you, Madam President. I have two points of communication. I just want to, because of the snow and the application of the new protocol that we have on the streets, I've had people communicate that they really, really like the fact that there's not coal dust all over the streets. It seems to be very popular with people. And it seems to be working just fine for the people who've communicated with me about it. However, the other matter is the AEP tree, as some people put it, desecration, on the east, far east side of Athens. I've had multiple calls about things that they don't like about it. And I know that David Ingram, who's the Chair of the Shade Tree Commission, talked about how an ordinance is supposed to be coming up probably to reauthorize an ordinance with some of the contracting. So we'll have a lot to discuss about this. However, many people called me about, one, how rude people have been when they've come into their yards; two, that a lot of miscellaneous stumps and branches and tree debris has been left in their yards; and three, that they think that it's just kind of outrageous, the number of trees that have been removed. Now, I know that AEP has the right to do this, and there's always a balance between removal and preservation of large old trees. I know that when they did it in the Near East side, program of replacing some of the trees, they did take out, and I'm wondering if that could be kind of pursued by the city because a lot of people are very upset about this. And some people, and I agree, you know, losing a big old tree is like losing a friend. And, you know, we are a tree city, and we have to be very careful about our trees.
And so, I'm sure the mayor has a folder somewhere that tells the exact language we need to put in the next contract AEP to prevent this. And if he doesn't, we can figure it out in the next two years. I believe the time is 2012, isn't it?
I think it's 2011, but we have the whole year.
Oh, 2011, even better, so we'll remember this.
And I think, I know David Ingram's aware of it because we addressed this two years ago. It seems to go in cycles where they do a good job, and then it gets kind of inconsiderate, maybe. If you get a chance, get me a list of the trees, too, so I know what streets they are. And I just drive around looking sometimes Sundays, see what kind of butchering, but I didn't track them that many. And again, really, just to get back to AEP and tell them this is a problem.
Right. I think a lot of people complained about the debris and that they were just leaving stuff in people's yards, which seems odd.
Yeah, since they usually have a big chipper, and they like throwing it in there.
Yes. But, I mean, it would seem that it would be a responsibility of Asplund or their contractor to take all the debris out from people's yard. They are taking trees because of their requirements.
Remember, when we've had those storms, it's been difficult to get the debris moved. We did move, we moved it ourselves on Fourth Street.
Right. But this, I mean, this is under pressure or anything?
Well, yes. The subcontracting is probably as big an issue as anything else. All right. Anybody else have similar communications or other things they'd like to add? Okay. Now, we're going to go to reports and communications from other elected officials. I'm going to start with something that kind of bleeds out of communication. That would be with our Law Director.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually have two issues, and before I speak to the second one, the first issue is just to say congratulations to Debbie Walker for being named as Council of -- how many years is this now, Debbie?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years.
Wait a minute.
I can certainly say that both, from where I sit now, as well as having been on this council before, you're certainly doing something right.
Thank you.
Congratulations. The second issue, and the one to which I think the President was referring here, we have a hearing set for January 6th, and this is going to be a teleconference, a hearing with the Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control regarding the application for a new Class C-1 permit for CVS Pharmacy on East State Street. And Athens City Council had filed an objection or had requested a hearing in this matter, and basically, I will just need to have a witness. Typically, it would be someone from the Police Department, as I imagine would be the case in this instance as well. Although certainly, if anyone from council wanted to volunteer to come to this hearing and be a witness, we could certainly do that as well. And there had been some question that had been asked of me at the last meeting of the previous term, just regarding some, what appears to just be some imprecise language on the notice that we had received from the Department of Commerce, in which it states CVS Pharmacy, 555 East State Street, and drive-of-window Athens, Ohio. And so, there was some question as to what the heck does that mean? Is the drive-of-window just part of the address, or are they requesting a permit specifically to, that would apply to drive-through sales? And the simple answer to that is that we don't know, but we have a pretty good idea. We were finally able to get in touch with somebody at the Department of Commerce who was familiar with this and said that there was nothing on the application that would indicate that this, that the permit itself would pertain to any sort of drive-through sales. But I would imagine that we would be able to get a little more light shed on that issue at this hearing on the 6th as well. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
And I believe that the Police Department was the major impetus behind asking, so.
So they know the time and place, and they'll be there.
They know the time and place?
They do, the Police.
Oh, no, I was asking you that question.
I do not know.
Okay. So Pat?
The Police Chief was copied on this as well, so I believe they should.
Captain Hiles probably was the one that communicated with us earlier, so maybe we could send one to him also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do that.
Next, Mayor?
Oh, nothing much. Happy New Year, all that stuff. The Planning Commission is going to have a public hearing February 17th. This is going to be at 12:00, and this is covering the rezoning for the B-3 in the downtown district of B-2D. One of those perennial things you want to hear about. So anybody wanting to give us input on that? That's when it will be, February 17th, 12:00, Wednesday. And that's really all I have.
The office, Kathy, have?
Well, this is not, it's a beat as the other announcements, but I was just going to discuss, you know, now we're closing out our books for the year, and we have our income tax receipts for 2009. And just to point out the fact, as we keep saying, the revenue is going to be an issue this year. And last year, we brought in about $450,000 over 2008 in income tax revenue. $200,000 of that was from the delinquencies that we collected, which will not be renewing. And so, our increase rate was 4.8%. So we could almost count on that being cut in half for this year, which is the lowest it's been in several years as far as increases. So just giving you more background on what's going on.
All right. So on that, I'm happy. We'll have ordinances for first reading. Oh, 0110, an ordinance authorizing design of the Mill Street Sewer Replacement Project 252. My name is on this one, so I'll say a few things about it. This is eventually a project that will replace the Mill Street Sewer over two years using CDVG money, Community Development Block Grant money perhaps, maybe regular sewer funds. Right now, we're looking at it. What the Service Safety Director and the city engineers would like to do is do the design work. And we will actually then eventually apportion the money out according to the benefits, some from street, some from sewer, perhaps even some from water in the Mill Street Sewer. I'll close in saying that we promised to do this as part of an application for a grant we never received. But we do need to do it because of the intensification of land use in that area and the large number of people that are living there compared to one of the single-family housing. So it makes perfect sense. And this is going to be one of our major projects, probably maybe this year, maybe next, one of those two. But we're going to design it soon. Anybody else? We talked about this last year. Mayor, while?
Yes. We were trying for the Neighborhood Revitalization Grant at the time, and part of local match was committing some of the CDVG money to the project. When we didn't receive the grant, the conversation got to be, okay, so are you going to use the local match to put it in place? And at that point, we determined we probably should, since this was a need that we identified at the time. If you remember, the grant, I think, was a high amount, $300,000 or something like that. And the intention of their cost was to fix other things besides this, but this was one of the components that was most critical and could be useful to do. So it's good that we're going to start the design, so we have an idea what we're going to go to next, whether we do it in one year or two, or this year or next, where it's still to be determined. We're thinking this year probably, but depends on the price.
Depends on the price. And it will be a very disruptive experience probably as well. So summertime will be an ideal time. All right. Any other comments? We'll be reading this next week because I'm going to have a special session, and then on the day after Martin Luther King Day. So we'll have it ready for Angie to get rolling on at that point in time. 0210, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise, accept bids where necessary, and enter into contracts for design and construction engineering and construction of the Jeff Hill Water Line, Sewer Line, and Street Rehabilitation Project Number 251, and declaring an emergency. At this point, I'm going to ask Chris Nysley to speak on this.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. This is a $290,000 project, of which $225,000 is from Issue 1, Local Transportation Improvement Program, so from a grant. The remaining portion, $65,000, will be from water, sewer, and street rehab funds, and $20,000 from water, $20,000 from sewer, and $25,000 from the street rehab rehabilitation fund. And as the title says, it is for design and construction, and construction engineering and construction of the Jeff Hill Water Line and Sewer Line, and also then the street repair.
Remember, Nysley had a question. Do you know the extent that this project is going to encompass? At one point, we were talking about going from the base of Jeff Hill all the way to Stewart Street included in this, or?
I think it is.
Is it now? Still is? Okay.
As far as I know, it still is.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I have actually a map of things that are changing, will be changing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think you could go back and say, the reason why this is done is because at one point, there was discussion of abandoning the street, but we found out that, in fact, we couldn't because people need access to their property. So a lot of times, people are really sure this is going to be exactly what will happen, and the land ownership is there, and this city is pretty complicated. So here's our complication. Luckily, Issue 1 is paying for it. All right. No other comments? Then we'll go to 0410, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to extend the current contract with Lakefront Lines Incorporated, declaring an emergency. Chris Nysley?
Thank you, Madam President. This is, as explained, an ordinance to authorize us to continue our operations with Lakefront. They currently provide transportation between Athens and Columbus. We have submitted a, we'll be submitting a grant application, and we're hopeful that that will be, we'll be adding another line to that in the future.
Anybody else? We're going to go back to 03. You're going to all think I'm opposing the Roundabout.
Go back over it.
I didn't even notice anything.
Yeah, we're wondering what happened there.
Monopolizes the whole thing. Okay. 0310, an ordinance authorizing the Safety Service, Service Safety Director to advertise, accept bids where necessary, and enter into contracts for construction engineering and construction of the Richland Avenue Improvements Project Number 230, and declaring an emergency. Chris Nysley?
Thank you again, Madam President. This is an even larger project. This is for what's been known as the Roundabout, and then also improvements to the Richland Avenue Bridge, one of our most heavily trafficked roads in the city. The total project cost is $6,000,017,895. $5,070,200 of this will come from the Small Cities Grant Fund. And other portions to help pay for the construction engineering and construction will come from our State Highway Fund, from the Permissive Wheel Tax Fund, and the Street Rehabilitation Fund. And this is necessary for us to begin to have this ordinance completed as we are looking for construction to begin in March 2010.
This March.
This March, with completion by move-in day of 2010, Ohio University Move-In Day by 2010.
We noticed an emergency clause on there. We will be reading it next week on our special session on the 11th, and then on the 19th will be the final read. Anyone else? So now, you can see three different parts of the city that are going to be under change.
Nancy?
Yeah?
This will include the bridge as well, the deck of the bridge. Okay. And as I say, some of it will go for three different grants, and we've done quite a bit of the design already, as you know. So money has been spent on this already.
Right. And so, she did recap, didn't she, the various?
Funders?
Funding sources. And those of you that are in the back row that are interested in the funding, this is a combination of various taxes, some general funding, some others. I've talked to a couple of students about this issue, so I thought they'd be interested in seeing that one. It's very complex. 0510, an ordinance amending the 2010 appropriation ordinance. Chris Sands?
Madam President, first of all, I'd like to move that we consider ordinance 0, no, first of all, excuse me, I think I better, I don't know whether I need to amend this. First, I need to amend ordinance 0510 to remove, from Section 2, to remove the $150,000 of the water fund, repair at the Brine Lagoon. That's already been appropriated in another ordinance.
I'll second that. Any comments on this? So we have already an appropriation for this amount of money. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The ordinance is amended.
Madam President, now that I move that we consider ordinance 0510 under suspension of the rules?
Do I have a second?
Suspension is requested because Section 1 is dealing with some money in an incorrect fund, in a fund that doesn't actually have any revenue going into it, and the liability tax property fund is taken care of somewhere else. And we also need to move some money along for this Law Enforcement Trust Fund grant as soon as possible.
Any other comments on suspension? The timing is critical, I guess, at this point in time. All those in favor of suspending the rules on 0510, say aye.
Aye.
The rules are suspended.
Madam President, I move adoption of ordinance 0510. This ordinance has two sections. Section 1 deals with this eliminating this Property Fund 87, transaction class 200, 300, taking $16,000 out of that, so that it will no longer attract its share of interest revenue. It's going to be deleted from the budget. Section 2, there will be two things happening here. Approximately $33,000 will be appropriated to the Law Enforcement, Law Enforcement Trust Fund for the Justice Assistant Grant, which is actually Secure Our Schools funding, something that the police have already received a grant for, and this is just appropriating that money. And $718,000 to Small Cities Grant Fund to cover the Holzer Access Road, the new Holzer clinic. There's a road being built from the clinic to the businesses that were already existing there, which will allow just one entrance to that complex. Holzer itself will pay the total amount for this road, but the money has been appropriated through our system, and this, we need to make sure that it is there for expenditure this year. The road is almost finished, or is it finished at this point?
Almost finished.
Almost finished.
Nine percent done. I think they're just waiting for sidewalk finishing.
And thank you for sidewalks. We like that. So those are the things that are happening with this ordinance.
Other comments on 0510? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is amended. All right. Now, we have 0610. Did I skip another? No? I'm getting nervous. An ordinance, amending ordinance 14609, authorize staffing levels. As we predicted, we'd be doing it right away. So Julie, we can talk about it?
Yeah. That is true. When we passed the staffing levels last calendar year, we suggested that we would probably find some things we needed to change. And there are two changes that we would like to propose. We're not going to ask for suspension under these. You have several pages in your ordinance. The back of the first page of numbers, middle of the page, Recreation Assistant Director is in bold type. That was inadvertently dropped out. And we're placing it back, with 75% of the funding coming from the Recreation Fund, 25% of the funding coming from community center funds for that position. And then, in the last two pages of the information regarding this ordinance, you'll see we're talking about interns and part-time positions, particularly in the Recreation Department. And we are changing the minimum rate that these people could earn to the minimum wage. And that is consistent through all of that, all of those positions. Those are the changes that we're proposing.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Little bit of folks keeping there. 0710, an ordinance granting a revocable license to Anthony Ferrian, owner of 6 million street for usage, city right-of-way for a fence. That's a member phone.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a pretty straightforward application for revocable license for the city right-of-way for a fence. I guess that people have been driving across the property, so he would like to put something up to keep people from driving across the property. The application has been completed, all the required paperwork is in, so I won't be asking for a suspension either. I won't be asking for a suspension either.
Any comments or questions?
Question. As I drove by to look at this, I noticed that the neighboring property has a fence. Do we know if they've received a?
If they've received a right-of-way, I do not know. Maybe that's something that the code office needs to pursue.
We might check on that as this passes through.
Yeah. And if not, then they need to apply for a right-of-way.
Yeah.
Or something.
The mayor may know something on this.
Really, I do not know. I know, though, if it's not a right-of-way and it's in a front setback, it probably requires a variance. It may actually predate the system, but I doubt it.
It may be grandfathered.
Possibly.
So, maybe the coach can just follow it after the paperwork.
We can look at that. This is on Mill Eye and the other across the street?
Yeah.
Actually, it's adjacent, side by side, I believe.
In that case, it probably isn't a right-of-way.
Didn't that go?
No, behind it.
Behind it. It's not a dead tree.
It is now.
It is now. Definitely dead now. Okay. The last item.
It was a live tree.
It was a live tree one time, unfortunately. Now, I don't think AEP did it either. R110. A resolution to ensure local match funds for the Circle Drive Access Road. And as a member of the finance personnel, I'm going to move that we consider this. Is it a one-meeting resolution? Is it a one-meeting resolution?
I would think this would be three of its own.
Okay. All right. So, at this point, I'd like to move to consider R110 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The suspension of the rules request comes from the Buckeye Hills, Hocking Valley Regional Development District, which sent us a letter back that said, "It's okay if you're using assessments, but you do have to stand behind it." And so, when we get to building this road on the 15th of March, it would be nice to have 2011, it would be really nice to have the $500,000 there. And the deadline that was given to us was the 8th of January, which is Friday. Therefore, I'm asking for a suspension of the rules on R110. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion? I would say that it's our intention to continue the Holzer approach, which is it will be funded by the private entities involved in this. That's understood. But the assessments have not been started and it'll be a lengthy process. And you will recall that there wasn't, with our last set of assessments, there was some issue. And so, that's why I believe that we were asked about this, to do it this way. So, I want to make sure everyone knows it's our intention to go forward with the beneficiaries paying for it, but we have this issue to take care of. Okay? And I believe that one of the entities is actually doing fronting, as we said in our earlier ordinance, the design work on this, so it will be ready at that point in time. Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended. I move adoption of R110.
Second.
R110. Chris, do you want to talk to this Circle Drive or let me do?
If you would.
Do the transportation. Okay. Circle Drive is a second access into a road that's not a road, has no legal authority. It was allowed to be built and kept saying, "Oh, we'll take care of that later." But anyway, at the end of this is a big development that has received quite a bit of money from various entities. Well, no, I mean, is going to be a substantial investment in our community. And so, at that point, especially since it involves nursing homes, and if I don't quit fumbling around, you're going to all put me in once soon, but anyway. The nursing home's location is on the edge of the floodplain and almost every medical facility in town is in the floodway or access is in the floodplain, at least. And what will happen with this road we're building, and one of the reasons why I'm pretty much in full support of it is that we will have an access to one of the medical facilities that has nurses and other things that would be needed, that is not going to be flooded if we get to that ultimate terrible flood. Now, I know I may be stretching it, but that's one of the reasons why I think the Circle Drive thing is going to be a very important addition to this, and it will be a road that will be paid for by others, as in the Holzer case, with the advantage in this case of, at the request of the city engineer, that we will be in charge. It won't be somebody else's engineer and all the things that happened in the last time we did it. We learn every so often from things that happened in the past. So, anyway, that's where it's coming from. It's going to go up the hill in the old right-of-way, running parallel to, let's see. It's called Circle Drive, so we don't have to worry about that, but it's parallel to...
Columbus Road.
Columbus Road. Thank you. I had a temporary loss of knowledge on that one. Okay. So, that will be what we will, what we are asking for for this, is to get the ARC money and, which we will start assessments on soon. All right. Any other comments? Mayor?
As you know, all these assessment processes take times.
Yes.
You'll have, you'll see this multiple times over time for the assessment.
Meanwhile, think of somebody we could get to sit on the board for you.
We have three good ones.
We have three good ones, yes. Okay. We'll see if they sit again. All right. All those in favor of R110, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. We're now at that magical time in our evening for this, where we will have announcements and other business. As you can tell, I am asking for, in order to get the roundabout done and rest of these things done, a special session next week. If there's anything you don't want on that was done for the first time, please inform the clerk. Otherwise, we will automatically put everything on so that we will have all of these, right out of the gate, things done by the 19th. Because we have quite a lot of things going on in the city this year, and we want to make sure that the people who are doing them for us have every tool at their disposal at this point in time. Okay. So, at 7:00, we'll have our regular, our special session with Mr. Sands leading at that point in time. And then after that, who wants a meeting? Chris Ball?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have anything on the agenda?
I would like to discuss the garden and domestic animals ordinance in definition, and I would like to discuss the right-of-way issue.
Okay. Recreation, one. Anybody on the side? Oh, Jim?
Finance. We will be discussing some further changes to the budget in the next week, and we may well have some items for discussion.
Expect nothing less. Amending R150. Oh, no. Right? All right. Chris?
Yes. Transportation. Just briefly to discuss, once again, to mention the Salt Bin Project. The street director and public works director, Stone, requested that we do that one more time before we begin the readings.
Okay.
And one more to that list. Environment Committee, hopefully we'll have someone from Soil and Water Conservation District to give a short presentation.
So, maybe we should put environment right after our regular meeting, so it'd be about 7:15. And then arrange them in alphabetical order, some other order. Any other things? Now, I know that Mr. Sands has something to say right now.
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to announce an appointment made by the mayor. Have you made it, or are you proposing it?
I'm proposing it.
Proposal from the mayor?
Well, no, basically, I think I, you have to...
I think you've done that. To appoint Joseph Wesinger, Wesinger, I'm sorry, to serve under City of Athens Disabilities Commission for a term of three years from January 20th, 2010, to January 20th, 2013. Mr. Wesinger is a resident of the city. He lives at 24 Hickory Street.
And this is one that is an advise and consent, or just, is it, this is an advise?
I think it is.
Okay. So, this and the zoning board, maybe some others. The mayor proposes and we dispose. This one doesn't have any resume with it, but we know. Some of them.
No, I think he did send in a biography.
But we just don't know where it is. We just don't know where it is.
Didn't make it up here?
I don't know where it is.
Didn't make it here? No.
Just on the sheet, you get me? Okay. But if nobody has a problem at this point, or if anyone, you feel confident to vote? Okay. All those in favor of the appointment is... Oh, you moved it, right? Let me go back. The parliamentarian's going to smack me. Did somebody second that?
Second.
Okay. Yeah. All right. All those in favor of the appointment, as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, zero. Any other announcements or other business? So, now we have opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda.
I know we have one person who would like to speak.
Okay. And if you give your name and address and other important identifying material.
Okay. My name is Charles Murray Rose, 22, veteran, city letter carrier with Athens Post Office. I'm not here representing the post office. I'm here as a concerned citizen. Four Ridgeview Drive is my address. Like I say, I feel compelled to be here again. I was here concerning natural gas leaks in the city. We had a situation on Elmwood Place today when I was working. The two individuals at this house, and I've talked to Mr. Sands already about this, and he can give you the particulars about the address and people involved. But there was an elderly lady that lived at this address, and I hadn't seen her for a while, and I had asked the neighbor next door, Alan Boyd and Suzanne Boyd, if they had seen her recently, and they said no, and if she had not been going to the senior center, which was a pretty normal thing for her to do on a daily basis. Apparently, unbeknownst to me, she had had a dislocated hip and was in the hospital at the time. Two weeks prior, I had smelled a natural gas leak at this residence. I knocked on the door, and of course, no one came because she was in the hospital. Today, as I was delivering the mail, an individual with the Appalachian visiting nurse caregivers was pulling out of the lot with her, in her car. I stopped to ask her if she'd seen Mrs. Ballinger, and she said yes, and she's going to have to move out of her residence. And also, the lady above. So, these two individuals had to evacuate their building because of a dangerously high carbon monoxide level in their home, which, as I said two weeks prior to that, I talked about this problem with Alan Boyd and Robert Mayer, both residents of Elmwood Place. They both went to the area where I had said I smell the problem, and they said that they smell something too. The only thing I can tell you is, when you've got infrastructure that dates back to the FDR administration, you're going to have problems with these old gas lines. I mean, it doesn't take a genius to figure that out. I don't feel safe in these neighborhoods, quite frankly. I have to work there every day, on a daily basis. And one thing that really annoyed me was the individual that had her house close to exploding, and Mr. Sands knows this because she talked to him on the phone, and he can verify what I'm about to tell you. She told me that no one in the local news media had even contacted her to have an in-depth interview with her about this situation. Consequently, because of this, the spokesman for the natural gas company at Columbus was able to get away with saying, "There's no problem. There's no serious thing." Well, Mr. Sands knows it was a serious thing. And so, I'm holding accountable the Athens Messenger, the Athens News, the OU Post, WUB, you name it. None of these people, of these organizations, to my knowledge, went to this lady, and Jim knows the lady's name, and said, you know, "Tell us about what happened here. Was it this serious?" And, you know, this really annoyed me, that no one followed up on that. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the only thing I saw in the newspaper about anything regarding this lady's account of what happened was, they said something in the newspaper about, that she thought it was a smell from the cat litter box or something like that, and that's why she let it go. Well, just to remind some people that may not have been here when I was here, I don't know when it was, it's been a while ago. But like I say, unfortunately, I felt compelled to come here again with what happened today, with two people having to be evacuated from their homes. I just don't like the news media in this town letting a spokesman for the utility company up in Columbus say that it's not a serious problem. It is a serious problem. And it's, you know, it's just something that's irritated me for months, that nothing has ever been reported about this, other than at this council meeting, when Mr. Sands said this was indeed a serious situation. That's the only thing that I ever heard in the, that was printed in the whole local media, that it was something very serious. So, that's the reason I'm here. I have to govern these neighborhoods on a daily basis. I like to feel like I'm in a safe situation. I want my customers to be safe. And it's, you know, it's just a sad situation when I don't feel anything is really being done, because these, this is the seventh time that I've smelled a natural gas leak. So...
We thank you for your vigilance on this and your attention to your neighborhood, the neighborhood you serve. I think it's a good indication of why foot service is often more important than vehicle service, because you can walk around.
I can thank my parents for that, because, you know, they taught all of us, three children, I have an older brother and older sister, my sister's deceased, but my brother's still alive. I'm the youngest. They taught us to, if you have a job, you give it 100%, and I'm a public servant, so I'm fortunate in the respect that I have a friendly relationship with my postal customers as well as a business relationship. And the only way to let the public know, which is why I'm here, I want this on the public record, is something needs to be done about these old crumbling gas lines.
So, thank you again.
Thank you, Chris. I'll just say, I think the members all received a copy of an email from Ron Lucas, the Assistant Service Safety Director. Mr. Lucas was the person that I spoke to several times, passed along information that Mr. Rose had given me. And last summer, he talked to Bill Allen, who was a representative from the Columbia Gas Company. They did do several surveys at the direct request of Ron Lucas in this area. This unfortunately was in the area that the survey had been done, but for one reason or another, the problem arose again. So, Mr. Lucas will, has already talked to Mr. Allen from the Columbia Gas Company today, and will follow up again tomorrow. By the way, we did determine that these ladies who needed to leave their home did have places to go with family or friends.
Was it a rental property?
No, it's a, the lady owns it, and she rents out a room for another professional person, a graduate student, maybe.
All right. Not to prolong the...
One thing I would like to add, if you don't mind.
We can't, we can't hear you, Charles, unless you come back up here.
They'll think you're some unduly, but you better take your hat off.
I don't think I said this when I was at the report. You know, the lady that lived on East State Street that was involved in this very serious problem, she had told me that she thought it was quite odd that none of the local news media had contacted her, followed... media had contacted her, followed up on it, gone into a little bit more detail about what actually happened. I don't know what else she told you on the phone, Jim, but she told me that the Columbia Gas officials that were there at her home would not leave her home until the monitoring devices showed that the levels were safe. So I just think, you know, not to belabor the point, but the local news media dropped the ball on this one, so.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I haven't concluded our discussion.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Charles.
Actually, I have.
Yeah, I was wondering why you did.
I'm on the house's console. I'm going to the...
And I'm sure that's where this is.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I know, I mean, I'll...
Well, but whether the ground is...
Sure, I adjourned.